Everyone, we're going to go ahead and get started with our special meeting regarding the airport. Today's date is February 4, 2025. The time is 9:00 a.m. In attendance are Commissioners Eberlein, Duncan, and Matarri. I'm calling the meeting to order. Are there any changes to the agenda?
I would just ask that we wait until Mr. O'Connell returns before we handle item one.
Sure. I don't think that's a problem. We can go into at least public comment, or do you want to just wait for that, too?
No, that's fine.
Any public comment, Jonathan? Okay. All right. Well, we'll begin with our business meeting, our business side of this. Number one, item one is the Airport Advisory Board Meeting Minutes Update. And Frank O'Connell.
Good morning, Commissioners. Frank O'Connell, Chairman, Airport Advisory Board. Yeah, our last meeting, held on the second Wednesday of January, was a fairly brief meeting. We really didn't have a lot of business to conduct. Primarily, we needed to elect a chairman and vice chairman, which I was elected chairman and Larry Hodel was elected vice chairman. And the only other item of business we had was a discussion around the current composition of the board, being composed of nine members, with seven being voting members and two being alternates. And we wanted to explore the option of perhaps making all nine members voting members. It would ease some confusion, both in the conduct of the meetings and in the definition of a quorum. We've run into a situation before where a quorum for our group with seven voting members is defined as four voting members, but for most other purposes, legal looks at it as any members of the board, including alternates, can be effectively considered as part of a quorum for public meeting purposes. So we thought maybe if we were to look at just making everybody a voting member, that would eliminate the confusion. It would change the definition of quorum for all purposes to five voting members, and does make it a little easier for us to conduct business. At the end of the meeting, Jonathan came forward to explain why we have seven voting members and two alternates, and he said that the Commissioners had wanted to maintain consistency among all the advisory boards, to have seven voting members and, in some cases, have alternates. So we've suspended discussion on that until the next meeting, and I wanted an opportunity to visit with you folks ahead of that. It was suggested that we would need to change the bylaws. And looking at the bylaws, actually, that's out of our province. That would be your province. You know, if they were to be changed, you would need to change them. But we did think at the last meeting it was worth having a discussion about, so we left it at that.
Questions?
Your mic.
Questions, comments?
I'd like to see the legal opinion that says that the alternates are considered in the numbers to make a quorum. So if you guys have that email or whatever it is, because that's not...
Commissioner, I can send you the...
Okay. Okay. That'd be great. Thank you. And again, for consistency's sake, I mean, I'm comfortable with seven. If you have members who are not able to attend regularly, then maybe we need to look at, you know, maybe putting them to an alternate position instead of a voting member. That's just my off-the-top-of-my-head thoughts on that.
Commissioner Eberlein?
I would concur.
Yeah, the only thing, the only time, when it comes to making a change, we should have a pattern. You know, how many times have you had a situation where there was a quorum that created a situation?
Really haven't had it happen yet, but it's the potential that I examine, because I know Idaho is very sensitive to public meeting statutes. And I, the inconsistency of having it defined in the bylaws as being four voting members and then being told by our own legal people, "Oh, no, you have to consider alternates as the same status of voting members for quorum purposes." It's just never made a lot of sense to me. And I guess, I looked at it from the point of view that the easiest way out of it, to have consistency right down the line, would be to have everybody as a voting member.
So I look at it...
But I will say, I do understand the Commissioners' concern for consistency among all the boards that they conduct business with, so...
Yeah.
I think the intention of an alternate was really so that someone would be attending the meetings, they would be knowledgeable of what's going on, and if someone stood and stepped down, you could have someone fill that seat and be knowledgeable and not have to be brought up to speed with things, so...
Yeah, I agree, because they, you didn't used to have alternates. And so we decided to put alternates in there just kind of for that purpose. There was a big changeover in '23, or I don't know if it was January or the end of the year, but the big changeover is why we wanted to have the alternates on there, because it was some outgoing members. And so we're giving them a chance to make the transition smooth. So I am happy to look at the bylaws with you, and I'll be attending the next meeting, the next advisory board meeting, so we can look at that and see if there's a change that needs to be made. But at this point, I'm fine with the way it is.
Yeah, I agree. So, okay, that concludes item number one. Thank you. On to number two, general update from the Airport Director, Gaston Patterson.
Absolutely. Good morning, Gaston Patterson, Airport Director. First item I had was clarification on the status of federal and state funding, as far as our grants go. Last week, there was a brief pause, if you will, with the funding, federal funding freeze that came down from the administration. It was more or less the FAA trying to figure out if it was going to affect that branch. Everything is in the clear now. They've determined that it's going, everything's moving forward. There is no freeze. We have access to the Delphi system again, and we've been assured by our federal and state representatives that we are completely good to move forward. I've actually processed four new requests for reimbursement, and they were all approved and went through. So we're completely on track. Nothing is off as far as funding. So we still have that money coming in on all of our grants that were approved prior, and all of our future grants are still green light as well. So federal and state funding is all good. Today, at the business meeting, we're going to be coming forward with our RFQ for tower services. This will be the same as last year. This is basically the request for qualifications for the controllers themselves that are going to be in our tower. Last year, we only did a 12-month contract. This year, we're going to do a 12-month contract as well. But we're actually, the only difference is we are having two schedules bid, if you will, a six-month and 12-month. So last year, we only advertised for just that six months, from May to October. This year, they're going to bid that, but then also tell us what it would be for them to do a full 12 months here, just kind of exploratory. What are we looking at? How does that change things? With that, there would be an airspace change. If we actually had the 12-month tower here, we would go from a class Echo, uncontrolled or controlled while the tower's open, to an actual Delta, which would drastically increase the visibility of the tower and the type of airspace we are, especially for pilots inbound. They would see it on charts, and it'd be a lot more clear situation for inbounds. So that, other than that, everything is the same as far as dates and schedules and everything. This is all pre-budgeted. We had approved in our budget for the tower controllers themselves, so look forward to that at the business meeting. Working with the U.S. Forest Service on their new tanker base design, had a meeting with them. Basically, there's been a few different avenues discussed on how we would accomplish this. Is this something that they would look at leasing property from the county, and they would develop it themselves? They would have a third-party developer come in. They want the airport to develop it. The way most of these projects have been going for them in their last bases is they, the airport actually supplies the facility. They work in partnership with the airport. The airport goes out for an RFP, seeking a development partner to build it, and the Forest Service leases it from the county. You know, they do their 50-year lease for the facility itself. So we're in the very, very 10,000-foot view on that right now. I'll keep you guys updated as we move forward, but it is definitely their intent to have a more efficient operation on the north side of the airport and kind of get out of that pinch point of the corner that they're in right now. So we, I just had an initial meeting with Coeur d'Alene Aviation. They are looking to host an actual airshow this year. So this is something that they want to have as a business. They would partner with the airport and have other partners in it as well, but they want to actually hire an airshow promoter and have some sort of, excuse me, a performance there, so that could be a really cool community event. We're looking at the end of June, so I believe June 28th is where they're targeting right now. So we'll kind of stay tuned for some more updates as that progresses. So that'll be, that'll be a really cool event for the community. And my final thing is I'm just working on different development plans to have the airport itself open up developable sites for hangars, so to actually start offering different lots to address our list, our waitlist essentially, and get our waitlist finalized and transparent on our website. That's something I know we've always worked towards having it, so someone can check status on their, you know, where am I at on the list? Where are we seeing? But in order to do that, we need to be able to have, you know, different ground to offer up. So one of the areas I'm looking at is that kind of citation off of Atlas and the Delta Three extension. I feel that would be a pretty easy taxi lane for us to look at, moving a fence and adding a small section of taxi lane and be able to open up lots there and start addressing the list. So there'll be more to come on that as well. But other than that, just normal ops. The guys are finally starting to get into a little bit of snow removal and stuff, so other than that, I'm open for any questions you might have.
Questions? I'm just curious, real quick, on the air traffic controller issue. This is basically a third party that you're looking to retain...
Correct, yes.
...to do that.
Yeah.
And the, is there any opportunity for grant money to help subsidize this that you're aware of?
Possibly. So that, I'm also working in parallel with the FAA's, the Contract Tower Program. One thing that we have actually found out is now that we have a tower structure, while it be not a full, you know, 65-foot tower like you typically see, it is a pre-existing tower. So that actually reduces the amount of requirements that you have for a structure by having one already. So there is a chance that as we work through the process, and this is still going to be a couple of years, but we might get FAA controllers in our tower sooner because we have one pre-existing. So, and that wouldn't cost us anything for controllers. That would be the FAA supplying them through the Contract Tower Program. So while we move down that road and they do their studies to put their staff in our tower, this is where we would have our contract, our 12-month contracts with them. And it would honestly be the same personnel. So this RFQ is going to be reaching out to the same, you know, like the Midwest, Circo, these are all the same companies that provide contract tower services to the FAA to operate their towers. So it's the same personnel.
Okay. Well, I ask because what you did was very creative as far as developing this tower for the airport, and, you know, I'm going to kind of put you on the spot a little bit because you got the attention of the FAA, and they were very interested in what you did, and hopefully it will be a model for other airports like ours throughout the country.
Absolutely.
And not have to spend, I think we were talking about 20, $30 million to get a tower?
Right now, the tower that we would have to build for Coeur d'Alene would be roughly $20 million if we met the full spec of an ATC, or a FAA tower.
Yeah. So, and then one last question, too. On the United States Forest Service wanting to have a base here, could you just talk a little bit about the benefits to the community on that? Because that's actually a pretty big deal.
It's a big deal, yeah. So basically, as we know, the base has always been at the airport. The U.S. Forest Service has always, have always had an aerial application base at the airport. Basically, what it comes down to is the aircraft are getting bigger that they're fighting fire with, which is good. It's more efficient. They can make bigger drops, put a lot more retardant down. As they get bigger, though, they're outgrowing a lot of their current base locations, just the physical size of the ramp and the taxi lanes that access it. Right now, our base, you know, as soon as you get two to three tankers, depending on, you know, if they're the C-130s and MB-87, now the 737s that Coulson operates, as soon as they get on the ramp, they're done. So you literally can't clear the runway. They're waiting on the other side to move airplanes, so you kind of get a logjam happening in there. So it's not efficient when you have in a fire event locally here. If they're needing to turn tankers through, a base that can flow, they can actually turn like a 737 in under 10 minutes, and that's fuel, retardant, and everything. Right now, we're, I believe they're just over 15 minutes, almost 20 minutes, to turn one, just based on logistics. So it's having a more efficient base for them to operate and have those tankers be able to simultaneously fill. Right now, they only have two ports where they can actually physically put retardant on the airplanes. This new facility would have four. So they would have four pads where they can be actively fueling with retardant, and you could actually move four airplanes in and out at the exact same time, which would be huge for this region. We would be, we basically want to be the model of what tanker bases should be. There's a lot of bases that are designed that are, they work, but they were not designed with pilots in mind, with the ground crew in mind, with fueling in mind. So keeping, if we can keep all that in mind, work in parallel with the Forest Service to provide a product that moves them in and out efficiently, I mean, that's the best thing, having those guys based here for our community.
Okay, well, keep up the good work.
Definitely.
Anything else for this item? No? Okay, let's move on to item number three. This is an executive session. I will take a motion.
I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to Idaho Code 74-2061F.
Second.
Commissioner Eberlein?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan?
Aye.
Chair Matarri?
Aye.